But we're gonna get started at 7:30, so I'd like to welcome everybody. And I'd like to start with an acknowledgement that we're on Treaty Six land, which are the traditional lands of First Nation and Métis people. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Sukrit. I'm not sure anymore if we've got one or two sets of minutes we've got to drop tonight.
Three.
Three?
Lucky three. I apologize for not being on these last couple of meetings. It's been hectic going back and forth to Mississauga. And then, sometimes when I'm home, I'm just like, you know what? I wanna relax, because things are hectic here in Mississauga. But as you know, Toronto, that is Canada, isn't it?
Rumor has it-
Right, Jay? Anyways, I have the meeting minutes pulled up on my computer. I can share my screen, and then we can quickly look over them to see if there's anything. Should we do that, or should we just sort of-
Sure, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Since it's been a couple, I've made you a co-host, so if you want to share the screen, you go ahead.
Perfect, I will do that then. Quickly share here, now I gotta make sure I'm typing out on the right one and showing the right one. Okay, so this is March's minutes. This is March's minutes. So I'm gonna quickly just scroll down here. That's all it is.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Yep, I would like to make a motion for... Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting for March 14th, as posted on the OneDrive.
Okay, do we have a secondary for that?
I'll second them, but I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
You've got me down for "What's Up Over Edmonton"?
Yeah.
I don't do that at the meeting, I do the news from space.
You are correct. Look at that.
What's up over Edmonton?
That's paying attention. Space, yes.
And then I'll second.
Then you'll second, okay. I'm gonna make that here.
Okay, so we have a motion from Sukrit, as amended by Jeff and seconded. Are there any other amendments? Or corrections in minutes?
I'll go back to March's minutes, so that everyone can look over that.
All right. If you, I'll ask if who's all in favor, and you can just say "I" if you're a member.
I.
I.
Any opposed? Carried.
Perfect, all right, so that's March. Here are the minutes of April's meeting. That's all it is. Are there any errors or omissions that I have, that haven't been fixed yet? Hearing nobody.
Do we have a secondary?
Bob seconds.
Bob Lawrence, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Murray, you've got your hand raised, is there a change, or?
Sorry, no, that's good.
Okay, any opposed? Carried.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last one, last but not least, is May's meeting. This is it, that's all of it. If there are any errors or omissions, please let me know. Otherwise, I would like to make the motion to move the minutes of the meeting. Abdur, I saw your hands.
Sorry, so just one thing, that's gonna be Astroimaging Corner 1, or wait, is this last time, or is this for this one?
This is for May.
For May, oh yeah, no, then it's good.
Okay.
It was Astroimaging Corner 119, I forgot, thank you.
And quickly make corrections on your next one.
Can somebody tell me whether Eric Donovan of the University of Calgary, is that spelled "Correcty Magnetic Sphere", or is that with an "M"?
It's not spelt correctly, it should be "Mag", so M-A-G, and then it's "Magneto", and so, so, "Magnet", yeah, so change the IC to an "O", then it's "Magneto Sphere", there. Thank you, thank you.
Sounds like a Marvel superhero, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, also, I believe the speaker is "Plume" with an "E" at the end, not "Plum".
Okay.
Up top.
Third from the top.
Feature presentation.
There's an "E" at the end, okay. Okay, perfect. All right.
Okay, did we have a second? Abdur, you were the secondary on that one, were you?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stop sharing, stop sharing, there we are.
Okay. And we're gonna move on now to News From Space. Jeff Robertson. Jeff, I've made you a co-host, so take it away.
All right, well, this is News From Space for the month of May. I must admit, I had a little fun with some of the stories. One, I couldn't pass up, it was just so silly.
Didn't have anything to do with Elon Musk, did it, by any chance?
I did not mention Elon Musk, I sure thought about it, but because he did launch 212 Starlink satellites in the month of May.
I don't think a News From Space would be complete without a mention of Elon Musk, myself. I think you mentioned him in every single one you've ever done.
Yeah, well, it was running a little late, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, here.
It seemed bad luck it once again struck Boeing's trouble-plagued Starliner spacecraft as it was transported from its hangar to be mated with the Atlas V rocket that would carry it into orbit. As seen here, a piece came off the craft, but it turned out to be a window cover which would have been removed before flight anyway. The Starliner was stacked atop its booster May 4th and rolled out to Launchpad 41 on May 18th. The flight named OFT2, or Orbital Flight Test 2, lifted off May 19th, carrying 500 pounds of cargo and a flight test dummy affectionately called Rosie the Rocketeer. Rosie provided engineers' data about G-force exertion on the body during launch and will be used to measure the strain on the vehicle's four seats. After a successful launch, the capsule performed its 45-second-long orbital insertion burn. There were problems during this burn, when a thruster malfunctioned, but that thruster's backup fired to compensate. The Starliner met up with the International Space Station on May 20th and began performing a series of fly-rouns, approaches, and retreats, designed to showcase its rendezvous chops. This orbital dance culminated with Starliner docking with the station. The original test flight of the Starliner was in December 2019, but it ended prematurely after a series of software glitches which stranded the craft in an orbit too low to allow for an ISS rendezvous. OFT2 was originally supposed to fly last summer, but pre-launch checks revealed 13 of the 24 oxidizer valves in Starliner's propulsion system were stuck, closed. It took eight months to identify the cause of the problem and fix it. On May 25th, Starliner separated from the ISS and began its return to Earth. Three and a half hours later, it performed its de-orbit burn and began its plunge through Earth's atmosphere. After its fire re-entry, the drogue parachutes deployed 9 kilometers above the ground. This was followed by the three main parachutes about 2.4 kilometers above the ground. Unlike the Crew Dragon which lands on water, Starliner lands on land, using airbags which inflate less than a kilometer from touchdown. The landing occurred in the US Army's White Sands Missile Range in New Mexico. Examination of the craft in determining the cause of the thruster failure earlier in the mission are in progress. If those inspections go well, NASA could end up certifying Starliner for crewed flight, potentially paving the way for astronauts carrying test missions to the ISS in the very near future. The Maven spacecraft, which has orbited Mars since 2014, went into safe mode on February 22nd, when its vital inertial measurement units began exhibiting anomalous behavior, NASA officials wrote in a May 18th update. While in safe mode, the spacecraft shut down all science and awaited instructions from its flight controllers on how to recover. In the weeks that followed, NASA managed to revive Maven from safe mode, but in a limited capacity. The orbiter is in a stable orbit with its primary antenna pointed at Earth to maintain high-rate communications with its flight control team. Maven's Inertial Measurement Unit, or IMU, which points the craft, seems to have failed. But the orbiter is also equipped with two Star tracker cameras that can take images of stars and feed them into a stellar detection algorithm to help the spacecraft determine its orientation in space. The spacecraft is now switched from the IMU to Star trackers exclusively to control the craft's attitude. NASA officials wrote in an update that the team is currently working to finish checkouts of an all-stellar mode to enable the spacecraft to operate. NASA launched the Maven mission. Its name is short for Mars Atmosphere and Volatile Evolution Mission to study how Mars lost its surface water to become the dusty red world we see today. China's Zhirong Mars Rover is adjusting to its first winter on the red planet. The Chinese rover has been operated in the vast basin of Utopia Planacea for 347 Martian days and has traveled almost 2 kilometers across the planet's surface. However, the rover is now receiving lower amounts of energy from the Sun as winter takes hold in Mars's northern hemisphere. To compensate, the Zhirong engineering team has adjusted the angle of the solar panels for maximum sun exposure and reduced the working hours of the spacecraft to control its energy usage. Zhirong has an automated sleep mode which will kick in if energy levels fall below a set point, triggering hibernation until environmental conditions improve. The coldest period for the rover is expected to occur in July. But for now, the rover's work continues. A new image from Zhirong's Navigation and Terrain Camera reveals rocks disturbed by a meteor impact. Mrs. Plecki Ingenuity helicopter experienced a communication glitch that team members have blamed on dust in the atmosphere. The Jet Propulsion Laboratory reestablished contact with the miniature Mars chopper on May 5th, after Ingenuity missed a scheduled call-in two days before. Initial analysis suggests high levels of dust in the atmosphere, combined with low ambient temperatures on Mars, rendered the helicopter temporarily unable to communicate with its base station, the Perseverance rover. The dust diminishes the amount of sunlight hitting the solar array, reducing Ingenuity's ability to recharge its six lithium-ion batteries, JPL representatives said. Among other issues, the helicopter briefly lost stability to keep time properly on Mars, hence, missing a scheduled check-in with Perseverance. JPL is changing how Ingenuity charges its batteries to help preserve power. The helicopter is operating far beyond its initial flight plan of five sorties, and engineers are assessing how to keep it working in the Martian winter, even though its commercially manufactured parts were not optimized to deal with deep cold. Although the internet erupted after a photograph from NASA's Curiosity rover appeared to show an alien door, no, this is not a doorway for Martians. Experts say it's a natural feature on the Martian surface. "It's a very curious image", British geologist Neil Hodgson said, who has studied the geology of Mars. "It looks like natural erosion to me." Curiosity snapped the image with its mass camera on May 7th. Several clues make it clear that the subject of the image is not an actual door. "For a start, it's less than three feet high", planetary geologist Nicholas Mangold said in an email. "Or this may show Martians are very small", he quipped. Other tongue-in-cheek suggestions from the internet include the idea that it is the space tomb of Jesus, a crypt for ET, or a save point for a video game. But the real answer is none of these things. Instead, what looks like a door is in fact a shadow opening in the rocklets almost certainly caused by natural forces. The Event Horizon Telescope has captured a historic first image of the supermassive black hole at the center of our own galaxy. The Event Horizon Telescope is a global array of radio telescopes stretching across the Earth. It combines data from the several telescopes to create an Earth-size instrument. The image was mistaken in the light of sub-millimeter radio waves confirms there is a black hole in the heart of the Milky Way, and it is feeding on a trickle of hydrogen gas. The image was unveiled at the National Science Foundation News Conference held May 12th. It shows a bright ring surrounding the darkness and the telltale sign of the shadow of the black hole. In 2019, the Event Horizon Telescope made headlines when it succeeded in producing the very first image of the event horizon of a black hole, specifically the black hole at the center of the elliptical galaxy Messier 87. Black holes are the densest objects in the universe, and their gravity is irresistible, not even light can escape. Scientists called this point of no return "the event horizon". At the same time the EHT was performing observations of Messier 87, it was also performing observations of Sagittarius A, the name given to the Milky Way's supermassive black hole. However, producing an image of Sagittarius A proved more difficult than for M87. Gas and dust in the intervening 27,000 light-years between us and Sagittarius A can scatter the sub-millimeter waves and blur the image. Also, M87's black hole has a voracious appetite and appears bright because it's consuming a lot of gas. "The flow of material into Sagittarius A is far more feeble", meaning it is much fainter. "We see only a trickle of material making it all the way to the black hole", Harvard astrophysicist Michael Johnson said during the NSF press conference. "Why the accretion of gas into Sagittarius A is so slow has been a puzzle for many years", says Nobel science laureate Andrea Getz, an astrophysicist at the University of California, Los Angeles. "There's a lot of mysteries associated with the accretion flow, in terms of why it's so faint", she added. Getz shared the 2020 Nobel Prize in Physics for measuring the mass of Sagittarius A. Getz and her team calculated a mass that was 4.3 million times the mass of our Sun. Future observations will now focus on getting sharper images to better understand the physics in the ring around the black hole, as well as how black holes affect the environment of the galaxy around it. NASA scientists have started to study 50-year-old samples of the moon's surface that were collected during the final Apollo lunar landing mission Apollo 17. Earlier this year, scientists at NASA cracked open a lunar sample collected in 1972. The sample had sat in a freezer for decades at NASA's Johnson Space Center in Houston, but recently made its way to the agency's Garrett Space Flight Facility in Maryland, where researchers have begun to examine it. NASA aims for this work to support future lunar sample studies that take place with its Artemis lunar landing program. The lunar samples in question came from an area permanently shadowed by boulders. "By doing this work, we're not just facilitating Artemis exploration, but we're facilitating future sample return and human exploration into the rest of the solar system", said Julie Mitchell, a NASA planetary scientist who leads the Artemis curation team at Johnson. "Before leaving for Garrett, the samples had to be processed while staying frozen. They were handled with thick gloves in a clear box within a walk-in freezer that was kept at minus 20 degrees Celsius, similar to a sunny January day in Edmonton. Getting the Apollo 17 moon samples from NASA's site in Texas to Maryland was a process. Being able to keep samples frozen will be important for Artemis as astronauts potentially return ice samples from the moon's south pole", said a NASA statement. On the date of May 30, 31st, the Earth passed through the remains of the shattered comet 73P Swasammen Walkman III, also known as SW3. The comet's remnants burned up harmlessly high in the Earth's atmosphere as part of the Tau Hercules meteor shower. Prior to the date, NASA said the shards of the broken-up comet could produce a meteor storm. But caution, the chances of a storm where thousands of meteors are seen is very much a hit-or-miss affair. People's idea of what a meteor storm looks like varied from this
Meteor storm.
To this!
This is even better than our screensaver.
While the shower never hit meteor storm conditions, it did produce enough luminous meteors to catch the attention of people around the world. This reporter spied several bright meteors during that night.
"It was not the expected storm, but the Earth clearly crossed a cloud of dust from the comet",
the French Network of Amateur Astronomers of Meteors, BOAM, posted on Twitter, along with a time-lapse image of the meteors. Canada appears to be getting ready to expand its outer space access and responsibilities by working on legislation that would allow legal action against crimes committed on the moon, among other space locations. A budget bill containing the proposed space law amendment for the moon was passed its first reading in the House of Commons. The amendment to Canada's criminal code called the Civil Lunar Gateway Agreement Implementation Act proposes to include Canadians in space committing an act or omission that would be considered an indictable offense on Canadian soil. The moon's surface, the Gateway Space Station, and Transportation 2 and from the Gateway would all fall under the proposed legislation, making Canadians in these locations subject to legal action for alleged crimes. If the space law section is ratified, it would have broad implications for international crime jurisdiction in space, perhaps with a police force dedicated to maintain the right, even on the moon.
Good stuff, Jeff.
It's, yeah, I had to throw that crime thing in, it was it's too good to pass up.
Great cracks.
That was hilarious. Awesome job.
Thank you.
Anytime there's a Lost in Space reference, I'm all in, so good job on the meteor storm.
Okay.
Brilliant, okay. Okay, so moving right along, we're going to now have another sequence in the presentation from Franklin Lodi. And where are you, Franklin? There he is. How are you doing?
It's been hectic. I couldn't get on for the longest time, but I had to use Sharon. She was able to get me in. No matter what I did, I couldn't get in.
Well, we'd all be lost without Sharon. I will tell you that right now. So Franklin? Totally true. So Franklin, now Sharon, are you going to work with Franklin on this?
Yeah, that's right. I'm going to share my screen, but Franklin will do the talking here.
Okay, let me just make you a co-host then.
Thanks.
All right, take it away.
Well, I think every center of the RAC and our many now have a different way of starting, and everyone is unique. But in our particular case, there are some pretty characteristics that were established way back in 1932, when the idea in January of 1932 that we should have a center of the RAC in our city. And I can tell you right now that right from the very beginning, the center had characteristics that were fairly unique, and I wanted to bring those out first of all. Okay, the first thing I should have to say that the impetus for the formation of the center was as a result of some props in the math department at the University of Alberta. And so you had essentially two people from the math department, plus a few teachers in the surrounding city that had the greatest interest, which is interesting. You would have thought it would be physics, but no, it was the math department. We also have another characteristic that many of these individuals were long-term time commitment, people who had a long-term commitment to astronomy. They were just so excited by astronomy that it was going to be a lifelong ambition to find, to follow the developments that were occurring on a constant basis from in the 1930s and 40s and the 50s and so on. Another characteristic, too, was that the wives of these and husbands of these individuals were also in a very big way involved, and it follows right through to today. Female representation has always been a feature of the Edmonton Center, going right back to 1932. The amateur and the professional, of course, which is known by other centers as well, but amateurs and professionals would work hand-in-hand on whatever needed to be done to bring the stars to the general public and so on. Young and old were involved, too, and supported very strongly by the University of Alberta props that were involved, so on. Another aspect, which is a little unique, but this didn't occur until the 1950s and the 60s, and that is the involvement of the city of Edmonton in partnership with the Edmonton Center members in bringing astronomy in the sky to the citizens of the city. Another characteristic, again, that goes right back right to the beginning, was that it was an endeavor that involved the entire family. There are numerous examples, going right back to 1932, where the entire family was involved in the process of bringing astronomy to the average person. Picnics are examples of art, astronomy depiction in art. Music was also a feature. Poetry, right from the very first year, was an essential part, and it is today. And so those are the things that really stand out to make the Edmonton Center quite unique. So when I go back to now the 1960s, this was the fruition of the Observers Group involved in the 1950s that brought things like stardust into being for the first time. One example, the star nights that began with the Saturday night opening of the University of Alberta Observatory and had members of the center take an act of goal without helping people. Sharon, where are you going? Anyway, but there are three things I want to bring up that really stand out in the evolution of the Edmonton Center, and one is the General Assembly of the RAC. As some of you might know, if you're old enough, that the original General Assembly was called the At Home, and it was held in Toronto in a musky old building in Toronto in the month of March, which of course is not the most pleasant time to be in Toronto, but nevertheless, it was. One of the things, the first things that the Observers Group did in the late 50s and early 60s was try to host the General Assembly or At Home and move it out of Toronto and move it out of March and move it to the long weekend in May. And so for the first time, the hosting of the General Assembly of the RAC was outside of Ontario and in the city of Edmonton, and it allowed, again, for, again, the family to be involved because you could arrange your vacation to coincide with that particular weekend. And another aspect of it was that a lot of the General Assemblies, as you know, have a theme, and of course, the Edmonton Center had a theme for each of ours as well. The first one, when we moved it to the month of May, was a theme called "Meteorites Like Alberta Better." And of course, this coincided with the Bruderheim meteorite, which fell in March of that particular year, and we had examples of photographs taken of the various multiple contrives that fell just north of Edmonton near the Bruderheim area and so on. On another occasion, it was our Pioneer Heritage that was the theme, and the banquet consisted of something that would never happen today, and that is the banquet served wild meat, like beaver, which was collected by provincial government trappers who had to call beaver colonies because it was causing flooding in the surrounding area. So the main course was either boreal's baked beaver, as we called it, or whitefish. And of course, another aspect of Alberta in the wild is Saskatoon berries, so we managed to collect enough Saskatoon berries from various members of the public so that we served Saskatoon berries on ice cream for dessert, and that was the theme of that particular General Assembly. Another General Assembly, it was the Oil Room, and it encouraged two blue-eyed shapes, Tony White and yours truly, in caution, promoting the hosting of another GA with a sample of oil sands for each and every person at the General Assembly. So that was something that started with the Edmonton Center. Then, of course, because of the start of the space age and so on, and when the city of Edmonton had to find a, something to celebrate the arrival of Queen Elizabeth II to the city of Edmonton and so on, it was the Edmonton Center that brought into action and started by the idea by Frank Page, who was a principal of one of the junior high schools in the city of Edmonton. He brought forward the idea of a planetarium, and so the center went behind it, promoted it, and went out to the various, to the various service clubs in the city and got them to submit their approval of the idea of a planetarium, the first public planetarium in Canada. And as you all know, a member at the time, one of the youth group and so on, was appointed director later on, and other members became lecturers in the facility. The Quilis Planetarium had a huge influence on the Canadian astronomical scene, with new planetarians streaming up across the country from Montreal, Toronto, Vancouver, and so on. So the impact was very significant. And then later on, as you know, the Edmonton Space Sciences Center had a similar impact, again, with a very strong representation from the Edmonton Center with Doug Guebe and yours truly, again, at the start, and later by other Edmonton Center members. As an offshoot from the space race, which added, of course, to the interest in the skies, was our star nights. The star nights were originally held at the University of Alberta Observatory, then, of course, at the Quilis Planetarium in the area surrounding the entrance to the thing. And because of the space race, I called a phone call to NASA by myself, found that NASA was willing to bring literally truckloads of exhibits that featured Mercury, Venus, and Apollo displays and so on. So we had to move it to the Jubilee Auditorium simply because the displays simply were not suited for outdoor living in front of the planetarium. But this brought in thousands of people into the Jubilee Auditorium, and we charged a small sum, a very small sum, you know, something like 75 cents or something of that order. That was big money at that time. And we attracted a lot more people to the Edmonton Center, and the Edmonton Center got very heavily involved. The members of the center built exhibits, so did exhibit material come from Russia, from the UK, but the truckloads from NASA were the big attraction, to put it mildly. I checked around, and I have not come across any indication that NASA ventured into Canada with such a volume of displays as they gave to us. So we enjoyed a very good relationship for many, many years. As a matter of fact, the, as a matter of fact, the leader of the technical team in Huntsville, Alabama for the Saturn V rocket was Bernard Von Braun, and he invited my wife and Audrey, who was also a part of the Edmonton Center, to his place in Huntsville, Alabama. And so we had a chance to take a look at the development of the Saturn V rocket. Unfortunately, on the weekend that we could make it there, he was called to Kate Canaveral for the first static test firing of the tape, but it was still, we have the badge showing our security clearance anyway. And I think if I remember correctly, that's also in the provincial archives and so on. Then I want to mention that those were the three features from the 1960s that had incredible drawing power to the RAC, and I think we can appreciate the uniqueness of each of those particular items and so on. I should note that the young people that joined the center in the 1960s, of course, went on to some very distinguished career. I could point them out if I had a pointer, but many of this group here actually were involved in international projects. Some, one of them, of course, was the director of the Kippeak Observatory in Tucson, Arizona. Another one became the chief technician for the Canada-France-Hawaii Telescope in Hawaii. Another became the chairman of the group that decided which science projects would be allowed on the ISS. Dick Henry would join the Johns Hopkins University Physics Department and became involved with NASA very, very quickly and so on. But we have many other people who have had a role to play in the international space program and astronomy in general and so on. So I think all in all, I think we can be very happy that the Edmonton Center has had a very meaningful life, and I trust it will continue to have a very meaningful life in the future. Okay? Is there any questions?
Oh, okay. Are there any questions for Franklin? I have to say that yours truly was a youth member of the century in 1966 as well, for a couple of years, anyway. It never hurt, never hurt my development, let's put it that way.
When you have youth members, there are a number of things that happen to a young person. They get education, they get educated for one, which may mean their school is beyond Edmonton, so they disappear for a while, and then they come back. You're a good, you're a good example of that. And others get married and, of course, have the obligations that are brought upon you by having children and so on. But it's amazing how many people return, and we have many members around the world, actually, that are members or closely follow the Edmonton Center simply because of that beginning in the 1960s.
Well, that was really great, Franklin. Thank you very much. So again, are there any, are there any questions for Franklin about, about the swinging 60s?
Swing 60s.
All right, well, I guess we can move on then. Appreciate that. Our next, Nick, I'm going to ask, now Ray, is it weens or wines?
It's weens, yes.
Weens, yeah. So, so Ray has got a brief presentation on a meteor he saw. So Ray, go ahead. Do you need, do you need to be made a co-host?
No, that's okay. I'll just tell the story.
Sure.
I was traveling east between Calgary Trail and 91st Street in November in 2008, just before 5:30, I would say maybe 5:23, and I'm not normally on the road at that point. I would have been home from my work. And, but that day I was out on an errand, and so there I was traveling, and all of a sudden, in the east sky, a little bit north, I would say about at 65 degrees, there was a bright light the size of a full moon, but it was, it was very intense. It was like an LED flashlight, just brilliant. And then it, it changed fairly quickly, and it went down like a funnel or a trumpet, fairly narrow like this, and it went lime green. And just went for a ways, maybe about 25, 30 degrees, and then it funneled out like a trumpet would, like this, and when it got funneled out, all of a sudden, many red little balls came flying out towards the Earth. So that was, yeah, that was in 2008. I had my radio on, and it was on 6:30 chat, and all of a sudden, the guy says, oh, our switchboard has been lighting up here. There's something that's happened out in the sky. And then they, 5:30 news came on, and they still didn't know what was going on, but many people were phoning in. And I would have estimated at that point that this thing happened over Tofield. Didn't know where it happened, but that sort of kind of seemed to make sense. And it was so dramatic that you expected to even hear a bang or the Earth shake or something. Yeah, it was just quite, quite amazing. So then I drove on home, got home and told my wife about it, and pretty excited, and then I thought, who? Then I thought, who can I speak to about this? Because, you know, who sees something like this? And I thought of a good friend that I often went out with observing with my telescope with, he had a telescope, so I phoned him up, his name was Dave. And he says, oh, Ray, he says, I was travelling on Twenty Third Avenue at the same time. And he says, all the car lights, their brake lights went on. And he saw this thing in the sky. So then, you know, you turn on the news and you listen a bit more and. As the evening went along, discovered that this was seen as far north as Fort McMurray. And as far south as Lethbridge. So then I realized this wasn't just over Tofield, this was a lot further east. And in the subsequent time and, and I guess day or days, learned that it happened over Saskatchewan. I believe near the Alberta border. And there was, it was a meteor and fragments of this meteor actually hit the earth. It was a year in which there wasn't a lot of snow, so it was very dry in November. And so ice had formed on the lakes. And so there was a great rush to get out there and find these fragments because the snow would come and then cover it. Of course, in the spring, these rocks would just fall into the lake and nobody would ever see them again. So anyway, that was a very dramatic event. I, I don't know what the odds are of seeing it. Like I said, I don't normally drive east at that time of day. There I was and it's fourteen years ago and it could have happened yesterday. It's still that. Dramatic in my mind. So I just wanted to share that story with everyone.
Great, that's great. And I see Alistair, Bruce, Alan. I know I've got pieces of that, I've got pieces of that meteor as well. All chondritic, as I, as I believe they are, and that's a great story.
Yeah, yeah. Now, did you, did you guys see the meteor? You've got the meteor.
I did.
You did, okay.
Yeah, I got the lovely double, got to see the fireball and then I got to pick up pieces of it.
Ross is holding something up.
Pocket list items.
Yeah, amazing. You know, the Bruderheim meteorite, the sixty-eight pound fragment was displayed under glass in the. Queen Elizabeth Planetarium in the sixties and to these young eyes, it was about the size of a house. And really, really, really something to, really something to see, but that's a great story, Ray. All right, now I'm going to, yeah, well done. It brings back good memories for everybody, I think. I'm gonna just speak for a little bit about the. The Northern Prairie Star Party. Because Rick and Susan aren't here and they asked me to make an announcement about it. So it's running from Tuesday, September twentieth to Sunday, September twenty-fifth. And there's three presentations lined up for Saturday, September twenty-fourth, which are outlined in the June issue of Stardust. And there'll be two other articles in that issue, how to book a campsite at Black Nugget Lake Campground for the event dates. And ways members can participate and help out at NPSP. Rick and Susan are looking for help in the form of door prizes, onsite volunteers during the event. And presenters for the Friday afternoon Astro Cafe workshop sessions. Please get in touch with Susan and Rick. And their, their email address, I think, is on the website, but it's npsp@edmontonresc.com. And more details and updates will be posted on the website later in the month. Now, speaking of the NPSP, we're gonna hear now a musical composition from our Orla. And he calls it Star Party. So I'm going to make Orla a co-host. And Orla, it's all yours.
Okay. So I'm gonna just see if I can share sound. And then I'm gonna share. Screen. And hopefully you can see. A screen that says Star Party.
Yes.
All right. So I'm just gonna start it.
Star parties are one or multiple night events that bring excited amateurs together under dark skies to share their love of stargazing. The Sky News Star Party Calendar lists astronomy events across Canada for two thousand and twenty-two. Here's a song that will help you celebrate the night sky.
The sun is going down and the stars are shining through. There is not a cloud in sight and the moon is almost new. This could be a perfect night, oh, the atmosphere is still. There are no northern lights on top of this hill. So it is time to start the music. The time has come to dance the night away. It's time to look up at heaven. There is nothing that compares to the Milky Way at night. When the sky is a velvet black, far from the city lights. When the moon is nearly new, the stars will guide your way. What a perfect start to the ending of the day. So it is time to start the music. The time has come to dance the night away. It's time to look up at heaven. While the sky is slowly turning round the northern star. We begin to contemplate where we really are. And in the stillness of the night, you can clearly hear. Size of wonders music to my ear. So it is time to start the music. The time has come to dance the night away. It's time to look up at heaven. Look at distant galaxies and nebulae and things. We watch a comet drifting by and stars that blow smoke rings. Reminisce about the things we saw the other night. We talk about what we will see before the morning light. So it is time to start the music. The time has come to dance the night away. It's time to look up at heaven. Much too soon, the sun comes up and the stars begin to fade. Say good mornings to the night and to the friends we made. Tomorrow is another night, oh, I hope the sky is clear. Unless it's pouring down, you know I will be here. And once again, we'll start the music. Once again, we'll dance the night away. And we will look up at heaven.
Well done. That was great. Fantastic. Really, really enjoy it, Orla.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move on now to Astro Imaging Corner with Abdur. Abdur, and where are you? Let me find you here. There you are. All right, take it away, my friend.
Awesome, thanks, Tom. Okay, just gonna share my screen here. There we go. Oh, go back. Awesome. So welcome to AstroImaging Corner number one twenty. There we go. Okay, so. First of all, thank you to everyone who sent in some images. We got some really nice shots in. And for anyone who might be joining us for the first time, this is the, this is the segment where I share images that have been sent in by RSC Edmonton members. So the first image of today is from Alan Hobbs. This is the Whale Galaxy. And the Whale Galaxy is a barred spiral galaxy located about thirty million light years away in the constellation of Canis Penestis. Still don't know how to say that properly. It has an apparent magnitude of almost ten and it appears edge on. And it's been nicknamed the Whale Galaxy because of its elongated, slightly triangular shape that resembles the profile of a whale. And NGC four six two seven is a dwarf companion galaxy that's most likely causing the triangular shape seen above in the photo. And Alan imaged this using a Celestron AGHD eight with a point seven focal reducer. And his ASI twenty-six hundred MC camera. And Alan was using a Skywatcher EQ six R Pro mount. And this is a total of ten subs of three minutes each and Alan was using Mina to capture the exposures. So great shot, Alan. This is another one from Alan. This is the Swan or Omega Nebula. And this is also known as Messier seventeen and it's by some of the richest starfields in the galaxy. And it's figuring in the northern two-thirds of Sagittarius. And this photo was taken at the Castilla-Stegila Guesthouse in New Mexico, near Silver City on April fourth. And this is a combination of twenty subs of three minutes each. And again, Alan was using the Celestron AGHD eight with a point seven focal reducer. And the twenty-six hundred MC camera on the EQ six R mount. So amazing detail. And this is the Butterfly Cluster, Messier six. It's, it's a. Cluster of stars in the southern constellation of Scorpius and the name derives from the vague resemblance of its shape to a butterfly. And this was taken at the same location with the same equipment as the previous images and this was nineteen subs of one minute each. I really like the contrast between the star colors, that really bright orange star stands out quite well. And this is the Eagle Nebula from Alan. This is. A wide field that was taken at the same location as the previous ones and this is a total of forty subs of thirty seconds each. With the Rasa eight and the twenty-six hundred MC Pro camera. And the next image is a zoomed in version of the Eagle Nebula. And this was with the AGHD eight with the point seven focal reducer. And that's the pillars of creation right in the center there, the famous Hubble shot. And last one from Alan, this is, this is Omega Centauri, the biggest and brightest globular cluster in Earth's skies. And this is a total of ten subs of one minute each. Using the AGHD eight and twenty-six hundred MC Pro camera and the point seven focal reducer. And this was processed in PixInsight and Photoshop. And this cluster is in the constellation of Centaurus, so it's visible from the southern hemisphere, but unfortunately not for us northerners. And Alan says that astronomers have found evidence of a medium-sized black hole in the core of Omega Centauri. And it's one of the largest and most massive globular clusters orbiting our Milky Way galaxy. And the intermediate mass black hole is estimated to be about forty thousand times the mass of the sun. And Alan says that this may not be a globular cluster, but in fact a captured dwarf galaxy that's been stripped of its outer stars. So I do hope to see that someday. Seems like it would be an amazing view. Next, we have this image sent in by Mark. This is from the night of January one or two. And this is the evening twilight with Moon, Caster and Pollux. And this was taken. With a fifty millimeter, one point eight lens at ISO sixteen hundred and this is a one fifteenth of a second exposure. And you can see the earth shine on the moon where that dark part of the moon is being lit up by the light reflected off the earth. And this next image shows the NLCs from, this is between March thirty-first and June one. And this is at the morning twilight and you can see an NLC knot in the ring structure there. Mark says this is type S and type four C respectively. And these are two of the rare types of NLC. And this was also taken at fifty millimeters. At F one point eight, ISO sixteen hundred and one twenty-fifth of a second. And for anyone who might be interested, Mark will be giving a public talk on NLCs on August twenty-fifth of this year. At the Saskatchewan Summer Star Party and it'll be focusing on the very first sightings of NLCs in Europe in eighteen eighty-five. So this seems to be quite a recent phenomenon. And as Tom commented, NLC stands for noctilissent clouds. So these are clouds that are high up in the atmosphere, being lit up by the sun after dark. Thanks, Tom. And the next image here is from Dave Muscle. This is the Leo triplet of galaxies. And this was imaged using a monochrome camera and red, green and blue filters. Dave said he omitted the luminance because the galaxy cores were a bit overexposed when using the luminance filter. And besides the galaxies M sixty-five, sixty-six and NGC three six two eight, there are numerous faint spiral and elliptical galaxies visible. And also visible are a pair of asteroids, one of which will be pointed out in one of the next images. So absolutely beautiful shot and amazing signal to noise ratio on that. And here is this like the overexposed version of the same one to show more background detail. And this was from the luminance data that David captured and it nicely reveals the tidal tale of NGC three six two eight. Which is the hamburger galaxy and the faint spiral arms of M sixty-six. So you can see the two spiral arms coming out of the left side of M sixty-six. And the tidal tale in this galaxy, in the hamburger galaxy coming downwards is about three hundred thousand light years. Or stretches three hundred thousand light years from the galaxy. And it's the result of an interaction with another galactic neighbor sometime in the past. And consists of billions of hot bluish star forming regions, billions of stars and star forming regions. And also visible in the luminance data was the faint X-ray plume that emanates from the starburst nucleus. In the outer edge of the galaxy. So right underneath the hamburger galaxy, you can see this X-ray plume. And that's fascinating. I'll have to look more into that as well when I get some time, but that's a fascinating object. And also just below and to the left of the hamburger galaxy, you can see a Quasar WE fifty-two. Which is ten point five billion light years away. So that's most of the way to the edge of the visible universe. So that's, that's amazing. I wonder what magnitude that is. I don't know, maybe nineteen, twenty, something around that. Maybe Dave can let us know later. That's, yeah, amazing. Okay, and the asteroid actually is right over here. I just noticed that twenty twenty VF one seventeen, that's the asteroid. And then in the next image, you'll see a time lapse of an asteroid from this image. And you can see a couple more spiral galaxies near the bottom right of the image as well. So these are much fainter background galaxies. So amazing shot, Dave.
I'll say.
And up next over here, this is a time lapse of one of the asteroids that's under. Galaxy, if I can get that to play. If I can't, I'll just play the video separately. So it looks like I will play the video separately if I can. Find it. Oh, I wonder if. There it is. Okay, yeah, hopefully you can still see my screen. So you can see the asteroid moving up towards the galaxy right here. So I'm guessing this was taken over a period of maybe a couple of hours, two, three hours or so, but you can see. The movement quite well and this would have been a very faint asteroid, I'm guessing, considering the brightness. the movement quite well. And this would have been a very faint asteroid, I'm guessing, considering the brightness of the galaxy next to it. So, great job with the time lapse. There we go. Okay, and next one is another image from Dave Muscle. This is the Eagle Nebula M16, and this was taken in April from a location in southern New Mexico. And this image contains only about 2 hours of total integration time with 50 minutes in H Alpha, 50 minutes in O3, and 20 minutes in sulfur. And the stacking and processing was done in PixInsight according to the Hubble palette. Where red hydrogen is assigned to the red channel, blend of sulfur and hydrogen to the green channel, and oxygen to the blue channel. And this palette renders hydrogen emission areas in an amber color and oxygen in blue. And for this image, Dave was using his Explore Scientific 127 ED refractor with his QHY268M camera. So, another beautiful shot. And this is the legendary Horsehead Nebula. This was taken again from New Mexico in April. And this includes data from 22 5-minute exposures shot exclusively in H Alpha light. And it was minimally processed in PixInsight, and some noise reduction was done in Topaz Dinois AI. And as with all the images that Dave takes these days, this was with the 5-inch Explore Scientific Refractor with a 0.7 focal reducer and the QHY268 monochrome camera with Antalya narrowband 3-nanometer filters. So, amazing shot. And next is from Tom, and this is the Western Veil Nebula. And this is one of the images that Thomas shot with his new-to-him Takahashi TSA 120 refractor. And this was the first target that Tom had chosen for that refractor in part because it had been a few years since he imaged it, and in part because it fits so well in the field of view of the telescope with his QSI 683 CCD camera without needing either a reducer or an extender. And Tom says the image is not cropped, and he didn't need a field platner either. And Tom says that although if you're using a larger camera with that scope, you might end up needing one. And Tom imaged this in the wee hours of the previous morning through increasingly hazy skies at Pigeon Lake and in narrowband to avoid interference from the light of the bright moon 5. And the total was about 5, 6-minute hydrogen alpha images and 8 6-minute images in each of oxygen and sulfur for a total of 2 hours and 6 minutes of data. And the sub-images were stacked and aligned using astropysal processor and then combined using Star Tools. So, amazing shot and very, very nice detail. And this next image is from Ray. This is the Pinwheel Galaxy Messier 101. And this is a total of 14 5-minute exposures taken with the QHY268 camera through a William Optics 132 refractor on an Ioptron CM60 mount. And this was stacked in APP and processed in Lightroom. This next image is the Lion Nebula, imaged in hydrogen alpha in the constellation of Cepius. And Yusuf photographed this from his backyard on May 31st and June 1st. And during the time of the year, the image is solely in narrowband using an HOO blend method since you can only get data in HA and O3, or Yusuf only got data in those two bands. And Yusuf said that he hopes to image this using the silicone filter as well in the future and try another blending method. And this was a total of 16, 15-minute images in hydrogen alpha for a total of 4 hours of data and 10, 15-minute images in oxygen for a total of 2.5 hours of data. So, in total, it was 6 and 1/2 hours of integration time. And Yusuf said that he had way too much process, too much processing to do, and he never seems to have time for it. And the equipment was the usual that Yusuf uses right now is the Skywatcher Spirit 120 ED, Skywatcher EQ6R mount, the full-frame ASI 6200mm camera. And he was using the Astridon Hydrogen Alpha and O3 filters with these ZWO filter wheel. And all the capturing was done in Voyager and PhD, and processing was done in Deep Sky Stacker, PixInsight, Photoshop, and Topaz Dinois AR. And this next image, which is the Cave Nebula, was taken with all of the same equipment from Yusuf's backyard on June 2nd and 3rd. And this nebula is located in the constellation of Cepius, and this was a total of 12, 15-minute exposures in HA for 3 hours of data and 8, 15 minutes of exposures in O3 for 2 hours of data. So, the total was about 5 hours of integration time. And this was with the same equipment as the previous one. So, amazing signal-to-noise ratio and just beautiful detail on those dust clouds. The next image is one of the ones I had taken recently. So, this is the Bodes and Cigar galaxies. And they're fairly nearby, only about 12 million light-years away. As far as galaxies go, that's practically in our backyard. So, I was able to get some detail, even though I was imaging at 560 millimeters. And the red regions in these galaxies are the large star-forming regions, very much like the nebulae in our own galaxy. And I was using the C11 Edge in hyperstar mode with my ASI 1600 monochrome camera and the ZWO filter wheel. And I took this from my Bortle 5 to 6 backyard, and in total, I had to capture 14 hours of data over multiple nights to get this image. Galaxies are one of those targets that do benefit from a dark, dark background. And this is a cropped, more zoomed-in view of the Bodes Galaxy. And some sharp-eyed viewers noticed some of those streams of dust coming up from near the core. I had to make sure that wasn't a stacking artifact, so I had to pull up some more detailed images from the Hubble, and those are actually real. But I still don't know anything about the physics of them, so I'll be looking at that more. And at the bottom of the image, you can see Holberg 9, which is a very, very faint irregular galaxy as well, which was nice to capture. And this is a close-up of the Cigar Galaxy. And you can see this explosive star formation going on in the center of the galaxy. And I think the star formation in this galaxy is about 30 times greater than what we have in the, or the rate of star formation is 30 times greater than what we have in the Milky Way. So, I always wanted to capture the hydrogen alpha emissions coming from the center of this galaxy. So, I'm fairly happy I was finally able to do it. And lastly, this is an image I'd taken of the Lagoon and Triffid Nebula regions. And this was just with a regular camera lens. I was using a Rokinon 135 F2 lens with my unmodified Fuji XS10 camera. And this was mainly to test my tracker that I'd purchased from another user here. It performed beautifully. I was able to get 1-minute exposures, and this was a total of 38 1-minute exposures. So, it turned out quite well with an unmodified camera for half an hour. So, you don't necessarily need a telescope to image larger objects like this. And this is, of course, towards the center of the Milky Way galaxy, so just innumerable stars in that direction and lots of dust and gas. And this is zooming of the same region, and this was taken from Firma BC while I was camping there recently. And after everybody went to bed, I took out my camera and tracker from the car and just got a couple of test images. So, you can see the bluish, greenish color in the top half of the Triffid Nebula and the red at the bottom. And the red in the Lagoon Nebula comes from basically the hydrogen alpha emissions, which glow red due to ionized hydrogen as it recombines with lost electrons. And the Triffid Nebula, which is both an emission nebula and a reflection nebula. So, the emission nebula part of it glows red. That's characteristic of ionized hydrogen, and the reflection nebula glows blue from the nearby hot young stars. And the Triffid gets this name from the three-loved appearance, and both are about 5,000 light-years away. So, that's it for tonight. A huge thank you to everyone who sent in some images, and I'm always thrilled to see all the work that the Edmonton amateur astronomy community is doing. So, keep those images coming. Thank you, everyone.
Back to you, Tom. Thank you, Abdur, and thanks for all your hard work in keeping this going and putting it together in such a great package. It's much appreciated by everybody.
You're very welcome.
So, I'm going to ask Alastair to speak on the General Assembly now. Alastair?
Okay, thank you, Tom. I need screen sharing, please.
Okay. It's all yours.
Okay, just a note, more than a note, an announcement for this year's annual General Assembly of the Astronomy Society of Canada. And to note especially that there are focused youth beginner astro sessions along with the usual advanced. So, it's kind of three things going on at once. Of course, you can sidestep from any one to other of the sessions. It's in a couple of weeks, June 24th to 27th, things kickoff Friday night. That's night is Toronto time, so it's late Friday afternoon for us, 5:00 PM. And we'll start with a presentation. I'm really looking forward to the Sixica ceremonial approach to the sky. And afterwards, there'll be the usual wine and cheese in a virtual session. You can actually walk around, see people's avatars and their names, and just wander up to a group, and you'll suddenly start to hear them talk. And you wander away, and it fades off in the background. So, it's a pretty cool way of having a virtual wine and cheese. On Saturday, things get really kicked off. I will let you read each one. I won't go through it other than to say that note that there are sort of three concurrent sessions for advanced, for the more of the beginner, and also again focused on the youth. So, there's some really neat sessions there. Things start off at a respectable mid-morning time of 10:00 AM. And a note there for all the astro imagers out there, Alan Dyer will be doing a presentation on nightscapes. Going into Saturday evening, one of the key talks will be Dawn of a Cosmic Revolution. And that's Canada's key role in the next decade in observatories and astrophysics. Following that will be Social Time once again in the Gather Town app. So, there's, for those of us who crave our together time with friends from the previous general assemblies and other centers, this is a key thing to do at the General Assembly. Sunday, things keep rolling. There are some neat things. The 2024 Eclipse Task Force is the 2024 Eclipse. It's not 2 years away anymore. It's only 18 months away. It's coming in pretty fast, and we'll also have an eclipse in October in 2023. So, things will really ramp up eclipse-wise that way if you're interested in that kind of thing. And then there will also be astrophotography contest awards. So, there's still time to submit your wonderful astrophotos. I expect to see every single one of those images we just saw submitted to the contest. I am not a judge. But all of those shots were really, really high quality. So, do consider submitting them. Sunday evening, we do start off with the annual general meeting, which have been going a lot faster than they have been previous times, and then followed by yet another keynote talk, Venus as a potentially habitable planet by Dr. Sarah Seeger, who is in the department at MIT in the States. So, some pretty big guns there. And then that closes off with virtual observing live feeds from across Canada. And then Monday, if you're still around, there are some virtual observatory tours. So, that's pretty cool stuff there, especially Submarine Neutrino Observatory. Each of those is about an hour long. Those will be pretty interesting there. So, wrapping it up, the cost to members to see all of these events is $20 for youth members, $15. And there's no need to remember what your membership number is, as we did last year. So, it's much easier to register. I hope to see some of you there. And then finally, while I have the mic, I may as well do a little bit of announcement coming up fairly quickly in a week and a half will be Introduction to Stargazing, which I host along with Virgil Beltran. And one week following that, Jeff Robertson's WhatsApp this month for the summer months. So, thank you for your attention. And again, once, oh, here's the website, and I will be posting this on the Facebook page. So, if you'd like to go through that again, you can, but rasc.ca will get you to this page as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Alastair, and do appreciate it. And I appreciate your continuing contributions to our center over a long period of time and in acting as the national liaison. It's been really valuable, and we all appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Since you bring that up, my term as National Representative is forced to stop in December. So, hopefully someone will stick their hand up and become the next National Representative along with Sharon as co-national rep. It's always interesting to see what's going on with the National Society. Oh, and by the way, I will be putting in orders for the Observer's calendar in a couple of days. And so, with any luck, they, well, they've turf the previous mailing company. So, there's actual hope that we might get them in time for the Northern Prairie Star Party. Fingers crossed.
Which, thank you, Alastair, and it also reminds me that we're still looking for someone to take the position of treasurer for the coming year, for the coming term, which would be a two-year term. It's obviously a very, very, very important position within the within our organization. So, if you have a background in bookkeeping or accounting, by all means, please get ahold of me, and I'd love to talk to you about it. All right, well, that concludes our meeting. We won't be having meetings during the 2 summer months. I wish everybody clear skies. We're in a peculiar position in Edmonton because when it's darkest, it's coldest, and when it's hottest, it's brightest. So, I don't know what to say about that except pray for spring and fall. But we do persevere here, and I think the perseverance and our dedication ends up with a lot of great results, both in observing and knowledge and in the astrophotography. So, thank you all for your dedication. Appreciate it. Appreciate all of you, and we will see you. We'll see you in September.
Tom, I've got a question.
Yes.
Of Alastair. I was just wondering if he knew anything about the poster sessions at the GA?
Not particularly, other than they do exist, and one of the sessions will be a sort of rapid-fire, you get sort of 3 minutes to talk about your poster. But the posters, I assume, will be available virtually.
Okay.
And I do also want to say, because there was a question whether we're going to do it in person, the Executive Committee does, is going to meet, because council doesn't meet during the summer months. We're going to evaluate the situation in August, see whether it's a green light for September, or we're going to hold off until October. It's hard to say. And if any of you have any thoughts about that, why don't you drop me a line? I'd be interested in hearing from the members about whether they would be prepared themselves to go to an in-person meeting, given the fact that, you know, I mean, the virus didn't get the memo. Keep that in mind, but again, things are opening up. So.
I saw that the Boeing dummy had a mask. So I saw that the Boeing dummy had a mask.
Masks are still a thing. And, and bless everybody who still wears them. That's all I can say. All right. So I will say goodnight. It's been a great, and we'll see you on the other side. Clear skies, everybody.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, everyone.
Take care, everyone. Have a good summer.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.